Nelson.
Here.
Lanier.
Here.
Briggs.
Here.
Blackham.
Here.
Corinas.
Here.
Niestral.
Here.
Ford.
Here, and the board was present. First item on the agenda for audience comments. We have one audience member who has signed us. Mr. Joe Darkousis.
Yes, ma'am.
Please feel free to.
And first of all, members of the board, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for giving me a minute to speak. I wanted to emphasize two points of consideration. First, thank you for your service. I appreciate all the time and effort, mostly on some of the things that you devote to work. If you look at the currently non-construction bid or consider that bid, I would urge you to do a deep dive into the construction cost estimate to make sure that you really know and are aware of what it is with it. My experience is understanding those construction cost estimates are the best first tool to help control actual costs and actual expenses. Second comment, as you consider the tax levy, I know it's a difficult situation. I've long set good schools, created good communities. I've long been happy to pay my taxes. It's getting to the point now where taxes are becoming a burden and a burden for some people to leave our community. And it's something that scares me. It really does strike me a lot. I would encourage you to consider that if you're aware.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, I am, you know, Cooper Dean. Parker, come here and teach your conferences. Which one do you choose tonight?
I didn't wonder, how did we get to this point? With a working team?
I don't know.
I think we got packed in, but who's going to be?
Carson Principal, you didn't say anything about that.
Very poor planning on my part, I apologize.
Okay, well, we will, um, we will allow our next item on the agenda to continue to perform.
No, sure, just a very short report. Obviously, we have parent-teacher conferences tonight, so we are lacking teachers and building administrators as they are supporting our teachers and our parents and our students. So wish them all a wonderful next day and a half tomorrow. We're done at 1:00. The district will be closed after that to start the Thanksgiving break, and then we'll come back. Really after break on December 2nd with our Canvas launch, which is getting parent signed up and the app downloaded at conferences now. And after break, obviously, we'll launch that resource as well. I would expect a big push on the Five Essentials survey that's out. And people take that into their buildings. People want to get those numbers. At least 20% of our parents are going to get all those data reports. And then obviously, after Thanksgiving break, it is a huge concert season. So all the items, just about every night happening in the district, whether it's PTO meetings, family nights, choir concerts, et cetera. So it'll be a nice push up to winter break, about three weeks after we get back before that begins. But until then, wish everyone a very happy Thanksgiving. Hopefully, if everyone wants a chance to spend some time with their family, not too much if you don't mind. But if you enjoy your family, a lot of time with them, have a lot of good stuff, just have a nice few days on. That's it, everyone.
Any questions or comments? Committee reports, equity and inclusion.
Just briefly, we had our diversity dinner, pretty well attended. I thought, I think, there's a number of things we would already do differently, but as I've talked to people, the consensus was we just had to start. So I heard from one of our participants who does work in some of this space. She sent me a resource on an equity audit, a meeting with the Assistant Village Manager, Mark, a shared potentially consultant that we could use to do some equity auditing work. So looking forward to that, just getting started. We want to know where we're at, bring that information back to our Equity and Inclusion Committee, to all the things we've talked about. Again, had a good turnout for the diversity dinner, talked about people's experiences in the community, what it means along those equity, inclusion, and diversity ideas. Picked up a few new members for the committee, and I think that'll always be good to share three different perspectives that maybe we did not consider in the past. So we'll pick that up. Our next meeting is on January 17th. We'll quote me on that, but it is towards the middle of late part of January.
Any questions regarding the next meeting? An inclusion committee or the diversity dinner? For those of us who were in attendance, thoughts? Are we, will you be compiling the posters that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we'll get a chance to look at that.
Yes, so everyone was broken up into separate groups. We never came back together as a group because it was not an open board meeting, and we had more than three board members here in one location. So everyone kind of worked separately. We were able to take a look at the charts, but we'll compile all that information and bring it back. Very consistent, talked about things, you know, related to cultural competency for staff members, initial opportunities for people involved. They all kind of revolved around the same general topics.
Will you talk about doing another one after the audit has been done, or will we do them before?
I think we would do it before. I don't even have a ballpark on that. It's frankly, it's tough to find people who can come and do it, not that they're not willing, but because this is explode the nature of people who are reflective around these practices, that consultants right there just go over wrong.
I actually mean, one of the sessions I stayed in that, they talked about, it was the Senate of Wonder.
If you can say it, great. But the other thing is we covered a number of partners, a couple of people at Governor State, Prairie State, who are willing to come into work with us, too. So I think it's, again, we just had to start, so we start. And now we can figure out exactly the date and when we're going.
Just a couple of things. I mean, my table was great, and we had a great conversation. I think, to your question or point, I think it will be very important that we bring all of those information, all that information back, and figure out what we want to do with it. The other piece is, I don't know, and it's, you know, probably because I've not been to the last couple of meetings, sort of the what next? So, you know, I hear the audit piece, but, you know, we got a lot of school year left this year, and so what else is sort of on the priority list? And then how do we communicate this out to the community? I don't know if photos were taken. Okay, I just only remember, remember, okay. So that would be important, you know, of course, in your newsletter. And I think certainly when we decide to do another one, we should really, really push it out and probably not call it the dessert with 161, because I think people immediately thought it was the usual dessert with 161 instead of something special and different.
Are we seeing the dessert junks?
They are. They're always special in the category.
Sure.
But those happen, you know, frequently enough where people immediately said, you know what, I won't make this one, but I'll make the next one. But, you know, they actually, you know, dinner with the district or something, I don't know.
True.
Would ooze in the box. And get a tract. A lot of people. So there are other ways that we can push it out and get even more participation.
The other question I had was, could you provide us some insight on how the efforts that we're doing with this committee dovetail tied into the strategic plan?
Well, I need you to give the portion, too.
It kind of leads more to, as Michelle was saying, like, what are we doing? And at least speak to what I think the goal is and how it ties into the strategic plan.
Let me throw out an answer and see if that's. So the strategic plan, obviously, has to address both D E F, I mean, has to address diversity, equity, and inclusion. It'll be built in to the strategic plan prominently, and then it will be the role of the Equity and Inclusion Committee to deliver on that. Because the strategic plan will guide all of the work. The Equity and Inclusion Team will have to deliver frankly on those goals around those topics. Same thing with, you know, the Learning and Instruction Committee, it could be Finance, et cetera. Those kind of subsets of the board, let's take over those areas of responsibility.
And thank you. So, again, just trying to get succinct from me.
True.
So the strategic plan will drive the committee, or the committee's results drive the strategic plan?
No, but the Equity and Inclusion Team will take its marching orders from the strategic plan. I just want you to, the board's clear on that, so I'm going to move on.
Well, I think the key is that the strategic plan will include Equity and Inclusion, right? And then what that looks like from year to year, how we create goals to stay true to that strategic plan might change from year to year. But the key thing is that it is a part of it. So how the board and the district decides to implement that and measure it will change.
Yeah, the D and I team may say, here's this goal, here's how we're interpreting this, here's what we think this work looks like all months, 18 months, et cetera.
Any other questions?
Learning and Instruction Committee, how long have they pressed?
How long have they pressed? But our meeting today, talked about a number of things. We really kind of, we bossed it up around a little bit, catching up from where we were before, but spent a lot of our time on data tonight. So we talked about our fifth to sixth grade, kind of accelerated math, you know, kind of change of sending our students over to Parker. A little update there is going pretty smoothly. But specifically on the data, we looked at a couple of things. One, we looked at R G U tests. And then second, spent some time talking about decreasing levels of proficiency as you move more grade levels, and talk about grade levels. Just what that means to current experience, what that means moving forward. I think where we landed as a committee, then can kind of hop in, is if we have an idea of what it's going to take to provide professional development and support for teachers to move forward, bring in an aggressive plan that is comprehensive, that kind of takes time into account. Otherwise, if we were creating a perfect scope and sequence for developing teachers in District 161 with the most effective instructional strategies, what does that look like? When does it start? How much time does it take? So we're very, kind of, called a draft, thanks to our next Learning and Instruction Committee. Anything else to add? I think part of it is stop to believe. So, you know, as our kids move through our district, we look at some of those elementary, whether they're growth numbers or proficiency numbers, and we feel very positive about them. But there is a switch, and it's not just a fifth to sixth grade switch. It's kind of an intermediate elementary kind of change where those numbers continually decrease as the grade levels increase.
I think we also talked about a low level of 18 numbers as well, that they were, you know, in a given building, they seemed, they wrote per right student ID seems to be lower than they wrote the rest of the building. And it was a long discussion, so some of the, I think we arrived at the idea that if we address instructional practices, that will come along as well. I'm not sure we're all 100% certain that that's the issue, but that would be an example.
I think we have to guarantee that we're using the best practices all. And then, you know, then it becomes a process of elimination. We have the resources, we have the practices. Then, you know, again, now it's okay, I want to be assessing the revenue. Yes, we are assessing. Are we using that information effectively to change the pathway for students? So as we can remove a number of the different variables by providing, again, best practices, high-quality instruction, with great materials that meet the rigor of the element learning standards, we're in better position to work.
Questions?
I don't know, for me, the one thing that I'm always kind of trying to spread my arms around is kind of the work of the committees. So with this committee, are we identifying whether it's instructional adequacies or curriculum adequacies that are helping to propel us? Or what is it that's kind of helping? Because I think that I've seen that there's an issue with math, and that there's not a steady incline, and that there are peaks and valleys. So I think if we're trying to strive to see a consistent growth in all of those, especially the approach to Parker, I know it's very idealistic, but is that committee kind of looking at that kind of recommendation? Would it determine where some of those issues went by?
I think so. But for example, one of the things we talked about is one of our schools that has the highest growth in our district. On that way down in Hyatt. So there's obviously the complexities of young children who come in with various levels of proficiency to begin with, that have different levels of growth, et cetera. I think we want to normalize our growth numbers. We want to see those somewhere above 60%. And then from there, I'm less concerned about the proficiency numbers, because we can only grow. Those proficiency numbers are what they are based on where our child is. If we're getting into consistent growth, proficiency numbers frankly will track with that. A big part of this conversation we had tonight was focused on the difference in instructional experiences throughout the district. We have a new diversity program, we have a new math program that both of those, when delivered with fidelity, have generated some really positive results outside of those. And having the programs with the rigor, the instructional strategies and experiences make a difference. And that's where you run into social studies, which is reading essentially, and then science, which in this case is still quite a bit of reading, lacking some of the reading, right? So I think it's a combination. But this committee certainly is focused on a number of those pieces. But again, it's staying tied to what the board has decided is what's most important. Because we also, as you referenced, the role of the committees, but not to create work outside of what everyone else has agreed to. And so, you know, we'll pick and choose on a couple of those things, but I think we're, at least we're going tonight. Our next big rock is we know that our instructional differences are creating variance in our data. So how are we going to address that global scale and give it the time and respect frankly that it deserves?
I'll also add that, you know, this committee is new, just a few months old. So as everybody, I'm sure, knows and understands, it will take a little while to figure out how all these, all the committees are still relatively new, but this is the one that's truly fresh off the block. So it'll take a little while to figure out sort of how each committee works and how we use it to continue to move the district forward and support the new strategic plan. I think there's probably, you know, 10 things that we can immediately think of that each of the committees should take on, so we just have to prioritize and make sure we're prioritizing. And, you know, I always tend to go back to, what are the three things the committee wants to accomplish this year for each of the committees? And they just need to be realistic, and we need to be able to articulate how directly, how we think it will directly impact, you know, the district construction and learning, you know, continued or greater capacity with the board, understanding our finances, i.e. our finance chair. But then also, you know, and continue to find ways to engage the community to participate and to be an engagement committee. So they are working progress, and they'll continue to be working progress. We just have to make sure, because we don't get anything else, that we are very clear on what the goals are each year, and what are those three things we want to make sure we get out. Finance committee.
So the Finance Committee, that one Thursday. And so I don't want, so Fran, the agenda, she had very detailed, I won't still thunder that everybody in the board is going to say anything now. But the three major highlights are, obviously, the levy, and we talked about that and the persons of last year, for this year, and the whole scope of that. The other topic of concern that she'll talk about is the grant, this is the property tax grant, property tax relief grant. And then the decrease in our collections and appeals and how we have to now address that. So all of that is all kind of bundled in her report discussion that she'll, like, talk about more. But we talked about it at length, it is kind of what it is at this point, but I will let her go and rest. Good meeting, even though they want to have a birthday, and I said no, and they had a nice day, my hand hurt, but that's okay.
But I mean, this is about the district, right? That idea wasn't, to make it late. So I am curious, David, were you in attendance?
I was.
So did you walk, if you needed to make a recommendation to your board colleagues, what direction, after the discussion and meeting with each other and Fran, what would you have a recommendation?
I believe you would. We were in agreement, it's, like, we talked about it at length, and of course, this is the first time we've talked about, it's going to build up over the course of time. And so it really, it's a numbers game. It's a, without going all into, it's like, I don't, I don't want to give a spoiler, it's so exciting what she's gonna say.
Fran, she needs charts. She needs some, she needs some graphics next.
Yes, to answer, yes, I agree with that, there was no, there was no controversial, it's pretty straightforward. Unfortunately, we wish it'd be a little bit different, because, but the hand that we are dealt with, how we need to proceed. But there are some wins, though. So it's not all, it's not doing well, it's just some of those.
And let me dovetail the win part, because if there was a place that I'll actually put asterisks for, I have some arrows pointing in the eye at lights. As Misha articulated, the three areas we looked at, the levy, the grant slash rebate program, and then also a place where we kind of deal with the fact that we're not getting our taxes in time and fashion. All three of those, to me, the shining light to it, was that we were able to do some things, actually to address the kind of, we have to public, to try to address the property tax issue. So that's one of the things that the committee would discuss. We discussed the optics and how we can actually look at those. And so I do want the board, when Fran speaks, to listen to what we're discussing, because she's going to be talking about a lot of the good things that we were actually able to do. And in some cases, even though some of us can't see it overall, but because it's varied, it is truly varied, but it's there. There were some ways, some things that we have to reduce on the property tax. And one of the things also kind of came out, which was confirmed at the conference that we just attended, was that the state is actually really trying to step up its efforts to try to give the schools, district, more money. And so that's another thing we have to discuss in the meeting, was another ding ding ding. So a lot of foot to try to go ahead and stop the downward trend and start to actually try to address some of the trends that people do feel to address the situation. One of the statistics I found extremely useful is that at one point, when it came to the states that were relying on states giving money to school districts, at one point, I think three years ago, Illinois was like 48. We have now, because some of the things that are going to put in place, actually jumped up to 24. That's a huge, huge increase. So the state is actually trying to do some things. I think that that's one of the things the Finance Committee is trying to look at, is the overall picture, so that's what we're gonna do.
So I, a couple of things. I don't know if anyone, when does A J have another discussion?
Two more.
I thought it was two. Can you go first?
I thought they had already made a decision. I just think they're very new in their hearing, but I could be mistaken, I'm not sure.
I don't know. But I feel like it's soon.
It is, yes.
So I was trying to buy that stuff, just to like, hear the conversation. But you used the word optics, which just triggered something. I think, I think the community at large, every year, has a very difficult time understanding the levy and the position that we take on the levy. So I wonder if it's a worthwhile exercise to actually do a letter to the community after we have gone through the levy process to explain, you know, this is the decision that we made, and these are the decisions of why we made them, and here's the good thing that has come out. I mean, just something that gives better understanding and clarity, because people will watch the video, they'll listen to this conversation, they'll have their, you know, social media chatter. But, you know, I prefer to get in front of it, and whether people end up agreeing or disagreeing with the direction that we move, at a minimum, they will be able to say, and they clearly can understand, we communicated in every way possible why we decided to go in a specific direction.
I just wanted to say, so one of the other things that we talked about is a lot of things in our, so one of the things I asked for Fran, so I asked her, again, it felt boiling surprise or whatever, but in the, the. Right, if you're gonna think it's some of Fran's, I'm like, this is on the way to four, Misha. But so she, and she gave us a presentation before, and she kind of did kind of a very convenient sample home to see that she was kind of tracking these houses. And so one of the things that I asked, and she said, okay, is that she'll continue to kind of track this so that we can see. So we have a lot of, you know, what affects what house, what doesn't affect what house, then we talked about, like, it may or may not, you know, like, we're gonna do all of it, but we can't say that it will. So the ability to have some actual, like, in the beginning, these are the houses, this is what happened, this is what did or did not happen. This is, you know, to have that historical data that we can look at, very convenience sample, but something I would even point to, because a lot of times things become just very kind of like anecdotal. But, you know, like me, I had no change on my, they tell me I did. I had no change on my property taxes at all, but, you know, yay, everybody else did. So if I was in a different spot, I could completely, I'd understand and respect it with that person, because if you didn't see anything, then it doesn't apply to you. But if there is something that can be actually seen and tracked, and, you know, very limited sample, what we can say, this is what it did do, this is what it didn't do, or what the impact is. Because if the impact is greater for the district than it is for taxpayer, then, you know, it's like this, you get $2, but then you lose $3,000, then, you know, then we have a whole different set of issues. So Fran did agree that she would kind of keep doing that as we moved through, as we have all these changes with legislation and that kind of thing, so we can have something concrete to look at, and we're not just talking in a cloud of things that could have been happened. So you can speak to it.
Right, and to your point, and first I'll say, it's one of the reasons why legislators are now even using the term new money, because now they're actually introducing not just the money that's allocated or to be allocated, they're actually finding additional money, because you're actually putting that in effect, because it's new. But again, I'm not trying to steal all of that, because Fran is just wanting to light it up.
No pressure. No pressure.
I think some of that, yes, there's some of that, but to your question about getting the word out, that was. the word out, that was part of the conversation with the committee. We actually do think that, that we need to get that information out to various publications and Fran, we try to get that information out on social media where we can. We need to get it out in whatever form we can. So we're talking about honestly, Amy, so Fran, you know, all of that. So we actually do believe that when there is good news, and we think in this case, there actually is good news that we need to highlight that to the community, so the community can know that S161 is actually working hard to try to address some of the issues that are apparent.
I think that's great. And the communication in the letter is news, right? I mean, so the good stuff, the not so great stuff. But I think it would be great if the goal is to provide clear understanding of where the board is coming from on our position when it comes to voting on the levy.
Yeah, we'll put it that way.
I think that would be a good answer. And Fran, remind the board, the houses that you used in your sample, it is truly a sample of homes across all of the, the entire 161 district. I honestly think, and thank you for agreeing to continue to watch this. I actually think, quite honestly, that's a great exercise for our local newspaper to take on.
I'm also very curious to see how that actually works. So last year, what I would just kind of encourage you to do is take a look at your 2018 total bill, the one for the second installment, because that will have all the taxing bodies and how much you paid for each of the bodies. Take a look at HF because they did an abatement last year. Compare it to what your bill was, I'm sorry, so the 17 to the 18 on the second extension. And see what that individual line did for your personal bill. Should see about the same difference than for 161 next year. What you did for the property tax with Fran.
Well, and I even think that education piece is huge. It's huge for the community. I mean, so I feel like we need to educate as best we can and so that people truly understand what the direct impact or not feels.
Because we can't impact any other line. We can only impact...
Correct. Yeah. But I mean, but I think the average homeowner, what you just said, I think, can you write that down? I think, I really, I think there's a huge education piece and people just don't know. I mean, so I think when you start talking about the levy, you start talking about taxes, I think people will go in whatever direction they're going. But going through the exercise and actually look to see how does it impact my taxes every year, I think, I don't know whether enough people are going to know. Okay. Well, we'll wait for the big show for a little later.
To be clear, there is no big show.
Can you hear the music? Okay.
Everything's rolling.
Oh, all right. Sorry, David.
Did we just call anyone in?
No, Steve just says it.
I just need it.
Do you have to say?
You have to announce yourself. Oh, Steve, right.
After all.
Thank you. Okay. So we now have several items under the consent. No?
Just one.
There's one. Oh, wait.
All discussion, all attention.
Oh, I got it. Oh, my God, we thought it. Okay, I'm sorry. Can I have a motion, please, to approve the consent agenda item, which includes November 25th, 2019 personal report?
So both. Second.
Any questions? Roll call, please.
Grace?
Yes.
Cora?
Yes.
Leetj? Yes. Nelson?
Yes.
Lanier?
Yes.
Flackton?
Yes.
Corin?
Yes. And motion is passed. And now we have several items, starting with the summer 2020 construction bid.
Sure. Essentially, what we're coming back for action on is just the approval to see the bids. We're not spending any money at this point, but we are, again, the approval that we will come back for in December will be to put the bids on the street to get the pricing for the HBC system and the steam engines.
Add a little bit to that. So we'll show you the renderings that we'll create in a minute. We're kind of walking through some of this. But just to note too, that the STEAM teachers were just awesome with their input into this as to, you know, what they really need, what they don't really need. They were, they were very, they were wonderful with their contributions and their acknowledgement that there was...
Glad you have these projects.
Come on. Why don't you?
Yeah. So I'm Mike Icon from Bolivar Technologies. So you'll see here, this is the existing condition that you have at the school. Let me go to the next slide. That's at Flossmore Hills. So this is the proposed plan. So on top, you see the STEAM lab. It is, as Fran said, a result of the meetings with the teachers. It's based on curriculum that they intend to deliver. It's basically a series of five groupings, three tables that are flexible and can be moved. But there'll be two students that work together on one PC at one of the three tables. And in the center are flexible tables which you can use for the robot experiments or whatever they're working on. There's shelving around the perimeter to store supplies and a refrigerator, different activities are different sets that will be used. And to the top left, there is a three printer and a series of more storage. And to lower left is a wardrobe of the teachers. And so this temp, basically, this is that in the other schools as well. And the surface, floor surface is carpeting, which is something that they felt was conducive to the students working on the floor and also more importantly, sound transfer. And it does just add to the overall flexibility of the space. There will be plenty of electric outlets around the perimeter. There's also right panel services between the tables, so it's a great place for students to work out, work up. Fran, did you want to add anything?
Hey, you know, I'm going to kind of jump in and help you out. So one of the things that they talked about a lot was, so in Serena, we had put electric in the floor. And when we really started talking about that, especially with the teachers currently using it, they actually felt like they were better off after the tables closer to the walls and actually keeping the existing electric in the walls was a whole lot easier than drilling up the floor and running that conduit on the floor. So, so you can see they did all that. That's why things are kind of out to the sides and attached to the walls. Because when we talked to teacher over at Serena, what she said is that actually, this doesn't leave me a whole lot of space for the kids to work on the floor, so to give them, leave kind of that middle space. The other thing that she had talked about was the fact that there was no hard surface for the robots and so on to work on. And then we talked about that whole sound issue with carpeting. And the teacher said, you know, we don't need anything fancy. A couple of tables would be great, just so long as we have a hard surface for them to work on. So that's why we decided to just go with plain openable tables in the middle of the rooms and the spaces, and you'll see them in the other spaces too. That way, they have that ability and also the flexibility to break down the wood around it, they feel needed. And the last thing is, so you'll find that in all of the spaces, all the media spaces, we've actually moved walls. All of them have like three quarter, little bit of walls. These walls will go at least to ceiling height.
Can you actually use that?
Yep. Scroll up for the render.
It's a little easier there.
So this wall right now in this space, trying to get my bearing for Flossmore Hills, is actually like over here right now. So the wall will actually be pushed, so the media center space will be a little smaller. But it then gives the room in this space for what they need. Additionally, it gives us the ability to put a doorway here and a fire wall so that we don't have that transferring into the sound, into the media center. That's a major complaint from every single one of the buildings. This lab is loud. And you got the library right there on the other side of a, you know, three quarter wall and people are trying to work in, you know, individually or in small groups with other students and then the noise factor is just really inconsiderable. So that was another factor that they looked into. So that's Flossmore Hills. Okay? Pretty much just scroll up to, go right to the render. This is Heather. No? Yes, Heather. Heather gave us a little bit more of a challenge just because the spaces really were narrow. So what we did, again, this wall gets moved here a little bit, but we also have a little bit of a bump out going into that in order to fit someplace for the teacher and shelving and that, those kind of things. These spaces are kind of awkward, like there's this kind of almost dead corner in here, difficulty to fit some things in there. But that would be what Heather is. And again, that wall is moved, it's probably about here and over here.
And Fran, on Heather, is this area, this designated space, not going to impede on any other future projects that we're talking about?
It should. That's one of the, that's one of the things that we were really very careful when we did this. We're like, you know, we want to do this, we want it to be really great usable space, but at the same time, we don't want to have to redo and undo. You know, and that was one of the things, but I kind of really liked when the teacher were like, no, leave the electric in the walls. That's great. We can do that. That's fine. You know, just give us another space in between here. So the nice thing for this building, get my bearing straight. This building a little more, so when you add this space here, she gets a nice space here for the kids. So a lot of these lessons, they start with kids on the floor. Heather is okay. Flossmore Hills has an okay space right now for them to do that. Western Avenue is just atrocious. There is just no place for the kids to sit. And God loves Jason Mont, she is trying and she's making it work. But you'll see with the next rendering, there's just, as a matter of fact, so bring that up to Western Avenue, important things. So right now, without this wall moved, it's in here, it's narrow as all can be. There's kids everywhere. And there's no good space here for what was designed here, where you can actually sit down the kids in an area and do the lesson before you send them out to their tables to do their work. So this will add that in there. Again, the wall moves, it gets moved, it goes up to ceiling height, we added door and the carpeted will hopefully help absorb a lot of sound so that what's going on in that media space is not as impacted as it currently is.
Okay. You gave a word that I didn't want to hear. Hopefully, so...
Well, so let's put it this way. This wall, it's not going to go all the way up to the ceiling. It's just, it's still going to be, correct, only a partial, I mean, we're saying it's going to go to the ceiling, maybe two, three inches over. So for whatever sound goes up through the ceiling tiles and over to the other side, there's still going to be some noise. It will not be what it is now. Because now this wall is only, you know, maybe two inches taller than me. And so, I mean, sound freely travels over and there's not even a doorway here to stop it either. That's just open space going right into that, that media sound.
So there weren't any caps, decimal levels and blah, 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 whatever, you might not jump right up, so there's an option, I don't know. Because actually, that is a number one issue, it's a sound.
It is.
Yeah, I suppose it's a standard.
I'm not comfortable saying it's a number one, hold on. I'm not comfortable saying it's a number one issue. It's an issue, I think it's large, but I think the biggest issue is generating usable space, which we don't have currently. And Western's a perfect example. Those kids might as well sit on each other's shoulders when it comes time to it. So this does earmark the general space. To David's point, that sounds a bit of a shame. So this takes a good pass and remind you, kind of talk to, you know, what are the thoughts around, obviously not taking all of it to the roof besides the astronomical cost.
Yeah. I think for a typical or separation between two classrooms, which has a standard decimal transfer rate, there would be sound paths that would be inside the wall. It's a standard practice. In order, as Fran said, the wall will go up above the ceiling, but in order to bring it up to the structure has an extra amount of expense that we typically have to do. Maybe if it was a band room or a chorus room, something to that effect, we could do that. But to bring it all the way up to the structure, considering the dock works and there's lots up above the ceiling that just propitizes really or makes the expense too much really for the result.
And is that at every school or one, I mean, kind of, is that universal or that schools have the issue?
For transfer between rooms. Like I said, we were doing a brand new school from bottom up, then you would potentially do a concrete block wall or something that was, went all the way to the structure. But in this case, when we're renovating a school or renovating something to this effect, we would take it up above the ceiling to a certain level. And especially again, since this is not a chorus room or a band room next to a library, we don't see that you have to take extraordinary efforts to completely separate the sound.
What's next to what almost looks like a window, but it's next to the door, the interior, I mean, the wall?
Here?
The door on the wall, on that interior wall, yeah. What are those?
That's a marker board.
They're mark boards.
Oh, okay. Mark board. Is there anything special about the material that the wall, that interior wall we made up that helped break up the sound?
It was a white wall.
A white wall, yeah.
Uh, we, just more, like I said, with the bad insulation, which is a sound type insulation. I think it's, you know, given what there is now, again, that there's going to be a wall or a door, it's going to, the sound chain is going to be quite noticeable.
I think so, very possible. And I'm sorry, did you go the...
The wall above the ceiling.
Um, I have a, or, excuse me. More radical suggestion or a question, but...
I'll go first then. So these drawings look great. I know we also mentioned Serena's wall. Do you have drawings for that or is that not in this scope just yet?
We're still working on Serena.
It's in the scope.
Okay. I know it wasn't known, but I know, I think so.
This is pretty, you know, a little more...
So my question is, I guess was curious as to, we looked into the cost of, let's say, man, we love our STEAM center, it's fantastic, we just need to delve the space, which we need, we would use the entire space that the media center and the STEAM lab are sharing. And then we would consider, okay, well, what would we do with the media center? Would we, you know, look at, you know, putting on, adding a room somehow onto the building? How feasible would that be to a 75-year-old building that already has a bunch of corner, you know, plus kids in it? You know, but, you know, to the point about how this STEAM lab might impact future designs, where we decide we want to move to or grow to. Have we looked into the cost of some sort of other space for the workable space for the media center? And I say this as someone who loves kids who sit and read physical books. I love his own media center. So I'm not in any way saying, hey, let's sacrifice all space and make a big STEAM center.
So I'll kind of jump in on this. So part of what your approval last time was about that educational advocacy program. You know, we're talking about doing that, it starts next year. You are looking quite a few years down the road. So if we were to hold off on this project for that, you would be dealing with the same conditions in your STEAM lab as you are today for the foreseeable future, I would say at least two to three years and possibly more in some building. So our, my direction, based on what my understanding was, to hold and to the teachers was, this is the budget and we need to make these blasts as great as we can with what the budget is that we have to work with at this time. That's the scope and that was the discussion as it helped us came to being. So what you're talking about there, absolutely no, there is no conversation about that at this point.
Okay. Just curious. And I am not also in any way saying, hey, we hit the month breaks here, I've got a great idea. I'm saying this certainly, because I remember we had that conversation. Anticipating conversations, we're going to get back to the board from the public, hey, why didn't we do this? hey, why didn't we do this or do this other thing? I was just curious if that, if we even glanced at...
I think at this point, we are just trying really to make the best use of that space so that those steam labs are just the best that they can be at this point.
Okay.
Really quick, and I appreciate the 3D rendering. Really difficult to kind of at least put an indicator or something into the top, bottom, left, right, can I say where the exterior is, what's on this side, you know, so that there's some association of where this is relative to where it sits in the building. It would just be useful for probably anyone looking at this, to kind of work that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is...
Correct.
Yeah, it'd be more of an extended view or a business label, you know, that's in here and all, at each corner.
Little classroom.
Yeah, just oriented. Yeah, it's a good idea, it's oriented.
Right, otherwise, no one's going to, can't really imagine where that is. Especially once it goes public, that's just, that's all it is.
Yeah, it's a good idea. We can do that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Great, thank you.
That's fine.
Appreciate it.
And when are we expecting the bids coming in?
Well, hit the screen, depending on approval on the 7th morning or the 10th, so...
Or issuance of drawings.
Uh, what do you, I believe the question was, when do you expect the bids to come in? So if we approve it on the 9th, when do you expect the window to close?
Uh, the bid will be open on January 15th.
Um, is there, I'm really trying to figure out how to address a comment earlier today. I know we've already agreed on the budget. Is there, is anybody providing substantial of that budget number is? Wouldn't, okay, that's my question. So, we're talking about two HPA systems.
Right.
And four modifications to steam labs. Okay, but I'm trying to, so... You said about finding them though? Correct. So kind of why we have that, how we came about setting that up? So that was actually a previous work package. And again, my point is more, can we just get that back out? Again, because we really want to be just... So, according to what you've looked at last...
Is this it?
No, we've already done, sometimes what we've done, we just need to re-sho. So I'm not trying to recreate anything. That's all I was saying.
Drywall costs.
Although, I mean, I'm not sure how much specificity you're going to get since what we've done so far is to stay where we're comfortable, what our max is, our level of comfort. I think when the bids come back, and then we're actually, that gives us actually something real to react to and dig deeper into our guest comments tonight. Really take a hard look at what's line by line, what every contractor is proposing. So we don't have that.
Right, we do have this half this.
Yeah, we have that.
Right. And that's all I was saying. To your point, that's what I was getting at. So yes, that will come out, and this also had already been looked at, so there was something. And that's all I was saying.
Right, yeah, so we will definitely make sure, and we typically, I would say, do a really good job of making sure. We're all looking at something different, and we all have varying experiences and backgrounds when looking at budgets, but, you know, oftentimes when there's something glaring, it just sort of smacks you right in the face and you can't miss it. But we will make sure that we are looking at each and every bid that we get in very closely before we move forward.
Any other questions? Bring in... The corney, cue. The strobe lights.
Oh, you know, so much.
Thank you.
See you later.
Um, one last thing on that project. So, in the process of putting this together, I also had a long conversation with Bob Lewis. He is the Senior Managing Director at PMA. He is a gentleman who helped us with our bond issuance the last time that we did PMA. He works as our financial consultant. So, I had a long conversation with him about our structure and everything else. And one of the things he did mention is various construction money that is getting ready to come out from the state of this last budget. On, and the whole idea is to have projects shovel-ready. Well, we will be very shovel-ready when this stuff starts coming out and they're expecting to come out at the beginning of March. So, depending on what information we get from the state, if it looks like we will be even somewhere in the ballpark qualify, we will definitely be applying.
Good.
Okay, ready?
Ready.
All right. Okay, let's start building. This is a nasty old spreadsheet. But, what it does in the end is, the intent is to put on the 1.9% CPI levy. What is actually going to go in the paper is this number, which is a 3.16% increase over the prior year's extension. It does not require you to put the black box in the paper, but we will put the black box in the paper anyway, it'll be in September, right? Plus, your bond interest gives you a total of 3.06% increase in your levy. That's just a normal CPI levy. It is ballooned up, because remember CPI is 1.9, and the only thing we're going to get above 1.9 is any new construction that we have estimated at $1 billion. But just in case I undershot on new property, we'll put on more. You actually have about $240,000 worth of excess in that number, that the county will pull you back to 1.9. But that makes sure that if somehow or another our numbers for what new property is going to be is really off base, we have enough room to capture it. Okay? If not, exactly where we said it would be, or it was lower, county is going to pull you all the way back, the only thing you're going to get is 1.9% plus construction. Okay? So that's step one. Levy is approved normally with 1.9 CPI out. Okay? Then we start talking about the property tax review. So, our estimated extension on this levy is going to be 25.7 million dollars. The increase over the last year's total extension would be about $500,000 additional. If anything, if nothing else changed from last year to this year, you would add an additional $0.5 million to next year's budget, okay, for that levy. But we're going to apply for the property tax relief. So after you abate 1.9 million dollars, your total abate, your total extension is actually coming out to 23.8 million. So you are actually going to see a decrease in the property tax bills for 161 to the tune of about 1.3 million dollars. Okay? That's just the build. That's where I'm going to tell you, take a look at the second extension of 2018's tax bill that you were just paid shortly ago. That number then has next to 161. And then next year, when the second installment comes out, and that won't be until the summer, take a look at that same line, compare those two, you should see a decrease. Probably between $200 and $300 for the average homeowner in Lost Lawn. Okay? Then we receive the property tax relief grant. It goes into the evidence-based funding model. It comes on now as a part of our base funding minimum and stays as our guaranteed amount of money from the state from this point forward. The difference of those two numbers gives you an increase over the 2018 extension. So we would have $300,000 new money as opposed to the $500,000. So you're not taking a physical loss, you are still getting $300,000 addition to your budget. It's just not the $500,000. And it comes off of the local taxpayers and comes onto the state's contribution instead. Are we clear? Yes?
Right.
The last piece that I want to talk about. So, in your total levy, remember I tell you that we have this piece? Those are cap funds, all those individual funds. And then down here, I add on bond interest. The reason that it's added on down here is because this is the only part of your levy that is not covered under the cost, under the CPI cap. You bond levy for what your bond payments are. Okay? Because of the phenomenon that we're seeing with the number of appeals, money's coming right off the top of our extension, our total collection rate has been dropping. It used to be at 97% after appeals. We are at 94% right now. So what does that do? This $500,000 at the beginning was your beginning balance, fund balance in the bond interest fund. Okay? We had all 2019 taxes come in, that second installment of the 2018 levy. We've actually received so far $466,800. We're short about $50,000 from where we had budgeted being because of appeals coming right off the top of your collections. So what does that mean? Well, we have December payment due, we have a $1 million, you know, a little over $1 million bond payment due. We're going to be short $43,000 in that fund. Because we're short on collections. So, what does this mean? So what Cook County does is they put on this loss factor. So if our extension, we expect to not collect 5%, they tack on an additional 5% so that it increases the total levy a little bit to cover for the amount that you didn't receive. We've gone from like 97% to collect. Down to right now, we're at about 97, and we could be approaching 93, we'll see. So we're at 94. So right now, we have a 5% loss factor on the build. Based on the fact that we are now down to a 94% collection rate, that's going all the way back to the 2013 levy year because these appeals are still going all the way back to 2013. We're recommending that, we already, I was going to say, confer and talk to Bob Lewis about this. I've been speaking to Rob Rossi about this. And now we've approached Chapman and Cottler Bond Council about the same thing. And Bond Council is currently preparing you a resolution to increase your loss factor from 5% to 6%. So that we can recover some of what we are not collecting or is being taken away by appeals, so that you can make your bond payments. I'm not so concerned about those shortages that are highlighted in yellow because they're really not huge amounts, all things considered. And at the end of the year, the only time of year that anyone actually looks, you're back in a positive position because of the spring collections. However, if this trend continues, it's going to become problematic. So I highly recommend that you move your loss factor from 5% to 6%. And I'll have a resolution prepared for you for this one. Right now, we've already had a $1 million appeals collect. Just this year, since July.
So you're saying it's 5% now, but you're looking at in anticipation of it?
I am looking at, when you go back, so, what you have to know is, at this time last year, we were still looking like we were at 96, 97% collecting. But then when the appeals started rolling in and you started applying them to the appropriate tax year, our collection rate dropped all the way down to about 94% since 2013. I remember every year, the state dropped about 94%. And because that money is coming right off of our collections, last year and this year, it's having an impact, it's having a real impact. And we need to make sure that we can make our bond interest payment, because you don't want to lose your bond rating. That's the end of my song.
I looked at the current Cook County tax sale report for our area because, I somewhat forward it to be weeks ago, but it's, I'm listening to this, I recall seeing on here some major commercial properties that have not paid taxes in several years, and as I look at the list, I'm not expecting it. So, is, do you really, I mean, could get worse than that?
It could. It could, but here's the thing, when I was talking so, a couple of weeks ago, every, every year, the South Suburban School Business Officials invite Toni Antover from the Cook County clerk's office to come and speak in the tax extension. What she does when she gets a resolution request to increase the loss factor, she goes back three years and looks at what the actual collections were. So, while I think where you're heading is, is it, should we only be going to 6%? Should we maybe be going, you know, even higher than that? I'm not sure that the county would give us that because we don't have the collection history at this moment in time to substantiate anything like that. I will say this, in all of Bloom County, we're the only ones still at a 5% loss factor. Even the high school is at 6. And some of them are behind on this page 13 in Bloom.
I mean, so, we're not going to name any businesses, but I see one on this list, several tax bills, but I mean, it's like 150 grand, but I heard is that they're dead, so that's one. And I see another one here, it's 50. You know, as the tax problems of the South suburbs have increased, it wouldn't surprise me if we sort of accumulated that a large number of properties, which are currently up for tax sales. So, personally, I'm worried that, you know, I guess with that, a tax revenue stretch or something like that, they would sell these properties if anybody wanted them.
Yes.
And so that means, unfortunately, this spreadsheet doesn't sub total on its PDF, I can't, but I remember the impression that this is well over a million dollars worth of property. And I got a guess, I don't know if it's half of this, you know, some of these people are just appealing or stalling, but I got a guess that it's half of it's probably never going to be collected.
Very potential. So, one of the things you have to watch about that, that I've seen, commercial properties get a little more dicene, you got a question. So let's talk about the residences first. So, any residents that would go into a foreclosure state, generally the bank is paying the taxes because otherwise they could lose it to a taxidermist. And they don't want to lose the underlying, you know, asset behind the wall. The same can be said of commercial properties, although that gets a little, that's a little different. It depends on who actually owns a property, you know, is there a mortgage, so to speak, on a commercial property? And, don't know. I wish I had more information to be able to make those kinds of determinations, but unfortunately, it's not publicly available. So, it's kind of, it's all speculation. Yeah, is there, is there absolutely the potential for this to continue? Absolutely, and that was a long discussion that we had in Hines. Is this just the tip of the iceberg, or are we going to continue to see that? One of the things that I think that we're hoping to see is that when we have these abatements coming and the property tax bills kind of rolling back, that maybe it will stop appealing as much as they have been. We don't know. What I'm hoping to see, so what Assessor Katie has been doing is, you know, really trying to make those assessments mean something. It is my hope that if you can no longer make an argument to the PTAC that your property is not appropriately assessed based on comparables, which is the... is not appropriately assessed based on comparables, which is the most, you know, that's the one that everybody's using is, my neighbor has got this much more than I do. There's no consistency here in what you're doing. How, what are you doing? So if Katie comes in and does his job and makes it so that the assessment process is fair, equitable, comparable, and then he can back it up at the property tax appeal board, then while the appeals may not go away, they may stop getting trapped in an actual getting money bash, that the answer coming back may be, no, it was comparable, it was fair, it was equitable, it just is what it is.
Yeah, Cam, to her point, one of the things, and as she said, we discussed it in detail, is how long it's a slide, which is the end of thing. And one of the theories is that this is just a correction to the assessment process. And then, as she was just saying, there's reason to believe that the assessor is actually trying to fix this. And there's been many meetings about this with the public about it. And so we're not necessarily saying we're buying into the fact that the principals and government is wonderful, doing this job on a great basis, and so everything's terrific. But by making the adjustment from, you know, from five to six, we're giving ourselves, and this again is kind of the outcome, we're giving ourselves a cushion in case there's a continued slide. That's how we kind of...
No, I understand that. I guess, I see commercial properties on here, and I've heard of this, I believe, for businesses. Fed several hundred thousand dollars in taxes. Plus, I've also heard that it's less a problem, it's lost more proper, but in the neighboring towns of Chicago Heights, Cook County has attempted to tax several properties. Here's $8,000 in past taxes because we had a house. Nobody's buying. So they literally have hundreds and hundreds of properties in the South Suburbs that people have figured out, oh, I cannot pay my taxes with impunity because the county's threat to auction my property is worthless. Nobody will buy the property. And so that's what concerns me about the length of this list. There's residents who do, and not many of these people. I'm pretty sure there are some of them are not doing. But I guess I'm not really hopeful that our collection percentage will not continue to decrease at least for the next couple of years. Because for instance, you're coming back for what, a year or two for the South Suburbs?
No, next year, South Suburbs.
So you reassess it next year. And then if these people are happy with the number, then maybe nobody will pay taxes. But chances are that it'll be another year of appeals and legal fighting on all of these numbers.
All the more reason to do the property tax relief program. Because as frightening as it sounds, the state may be in better shape to pay the bill of the taxpayer. And I thought those words should cross my list.
I'm worried about where they get the money from.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, we actually don't have an answer. We're not going to speak about those issues right now.
So I would say something very crafted about the, so yes, you are absolutely right now about the taxes not being, but there are, there are progress and situations in which taxes can be relieved and can be given back to homeowners and that kind of thing. And so in those situations, those homes are being taken advantage of. But it's a whole, it's a bigger issue than just...
And unfortunately, it's not, we can't control a lot of it.
Well, and the reality is, is that this time next year, we'll be having this back conversation. So whereas you have done a projection of what, you know, it might look like come spring of 2023, you know, I see this as every year, we need to have in-depth conversations and make sure we are as informed as we possibly can before we make decisions on how we move forward. So I appreciate the projection, but we next year could come back and say something very different, which I think is all the reason why I think it's important that our homeowners understand why we vote, when we vote, the direction that we are. Because I don't want the assumption to be is that every year, you know, 161 is not wanting to do an abatement every single year. I mean, so I don't want to start to build an expectation outside of every single year, we are committed to having an in-depth conversation about this before we make a decision.
Which is one of the reasons, even though it's a very small sample, to have something to track because up until this point, we've just kind of been, and not just us, everybody's just been kind of flying out of their pants. So at a minimum, it's like, okay, so these houses, we've seen the rise or fall or nothing or whatever happens with them, we have something that we can at least look at and say, this could be your house. Or not be your house as opposed to big numbers on a screen and then everybody has to think of it in terms of them. Because again, Fran told me I got some forum for legal cat sale, but I just got to take my word for it because I did not see it. That's what she said, so I believe her.
Did you look at the...
I don't know.
Okay, so Fran, to recap.
Yes. To recap, next board meeting, you will have a hearing where you will then adopt a 1.9 CPI alert. Then you will also take action to approve applying for the property tax relief grant. Then you will also approve a resolution to increase your bond loss factor from 5% to 6%. In January, after we hear that we were funded for the property tax relief grant, which we should because we are, well, we didn't need enough that will be funded. Then you will approve a resolution to abate taxes, so it's going to be $1.9 million. And then we'll file that with the Cook County Clerk's Office. And then it'll all go through and...
And this is one other thing I also want to make sure that it's just out there. So CPI this year, we're looking at improvement of 1.9. Last year, what was it? So that's a drop.
Okay?
Any questions?
I mean, I told you this is exciting. They crowd me in front.
Mr. Dragoesis? Dragoesis? I'm going to get it right. Do you have any questions?
I think we, I think we always, it's community. Of course, I need to commend the staff on the excellent work that they've done putting this information together. I think it's extremely complicated and they've done a great job of making this information available. I do agree with you, Madam President, that the community doesn't understand nearly half of this. I also agree that even if we go forward with this abatement, our individual tax bills may or may not be effective. And I think that needs to be communicated. But something's got to stop the bleeding in our community. And I think what I would encourage you to strongly consider is to do everything we can to stop the bleeding, to do what we can do right here and stop the bleeding. And try to reduce, try to turn that trend around and reduce our tax bills.
Thank you. Any other questions? Now, time for the gas and electronic programs discussion.
This really is just information so that you know what we've been doing. So back in 2013, our gas contract was coming up. And the history of the district was to only do fixed contracts and for extended periods of time. And as I'm sure you probably know, gas prices have been dropping, continue to. So we talked to Vanguard and I brought to the board the ability to instead go and purchase some gas on spot market. So we've been doing that since 2013 now. And I just kind of wanted to give you an idea of where we were then and where we are now. At the time, we were purchasing at a fixed price of $4.95 per third. Right now, even that first year when we tried, we did some, we bought some of the gas at a fixed price of $4.54. And then we got an average spot market price of $4.12. So we were doing much better. So we would purchase the gas in the summer when it was cheaper. We'd put it into storage, storage that we were being charged for whether we used it or not. So we started having some gas in storage and we would use that during our winter months to, you know, to pray the cost of the expensive gas during winter months. Where we're at now is we have about half of our gas on a fixed contract for this year at $3.27 per third. And right now, I have gas in storage that we bought on the stock over the spring and the summer at $2.77 per third, and we'll be using that over the winter months. So I just wanted to know that what we've been doing has been working and it hasn't even priced it down and just much better program than just purging everything at the federal expense. Electric prices have also been dropping. So we just came off of a .0323 per kilowatt hour rate and we're going to a .2831 per kilowatt hour. So we're also, actually, there's a zero missing in there, so... So 0.2831. So again, we're seeing those prices drop as well. So just wanted to kind of give you an update as to where we stand and what we're doing. And any questions?
Yes. Con Ed has done a huge marketing campaign to discuss ways in which they can try to lower corporate, large industrial usage. Have we ever talked to them about having one of them come up for free to discuss that?
So we've done things like change up the lights, we've done those kinds of things. The biggest feat that they have that I've spoken to them about at this point is the ability to cut off the power or reduce voltage usage is during the summertime, especially when it is peak times during the summer. Keeping in mind that the majority of our buildings are already shut down over the summer. The ones that we do have in use, I don't, we would not want to cut off to the sun to the program, would be key learning.
When you say cut off, what do you mean? When you say cut off, what do you specify?
So to, what they have told me is that they would have the ability to brown out a building. So it would take out your A C, that building where you would have your students, you know, in class. And that's kind of contrary to what you've all been trying to do in those spaces comfortable for learning. So that would not fair. The other thing we need to worry about too, especially over the last several years, is that we've had construction going on in those buildings. And we need the power to do that construction work. So we've kind of stayed away from some of those situations. We've been trying, you know, change up the lights and do all those kinds of things to have a more efficient building, but, you know, try to be able to turn out the lights and those kinds of things.
But just, every time they're talking, you know, coming in to do a consultation for free, I mean, you don't lose anything. Plus, we're now talking about adding an H P A C system to two schools, which is valid at this point to again increase the usage of electricity. I'm like, what's the harm to see what they're doing?
So I would have to take a look because again, we don't directly go to the content. So I would have to take a look at all those programs.
So are there any clarification from the board before we move on to this? So I'd like to get clarification from the board before we move on to this, just in the time that I'm spending with the levies season and negotiations and staff in particular. But just a little more direction before we separate off in this direction. If you're asking her to go do something with Con Ed, I just want the board direction.
I don't think that's very pertinent right this second.
Well, that might be something we can tag on the future discussion agenda.
But certainly keeping our, on our radar. Cam?
I'm sure. Giving Con Ed's other recent updates, I don't think that we should be talking about them right now. So I'll check them first before we decide.
So we'll keep it on the radar.
Any other questions about gas and electronic programs? October financials? Any questions? As the designations.
Sure, this isn't, this information is not new. It's actually old that, but we always bring it to the board on an annual basis. We just want to, probably bring the asset designations for all the buildings to the board. This is our first call since they were in ComEd at the end of October with Fossumer Hills, Serena Hills, and Parker Jr. High been commendable. Parker Jr. High increasing from last year's rate to form to commendable then Heatherville and Buster Avenue, moving from commendable to exemplary. The budget impact, you still get the funds for Parker Jr. High. That number is almost $50,000. If you don't remember, that's funding the Doffel classroom markets happening at that location. We also put the updated charts on essentially the equations used to determine the ratings.
So can you just remind us, when we received our designations last year and then we had to do the special report to the state? January, February for Parker? What now happens to that document?
Well, we're still using it as a guiding light. Essentially, we use it as we create our school improvement plan, but from the state's perspective, nothing. But again, it's good information that we can use as our, and that's how we set up our plan for change. And so I'm definitely not big on sweeping moves at the last minute. So we have it in place. There's good information in it, whereas we tend to use it to inform our school improvement planning process.
Well, it's a duration, I don't want to say like probation period, but like two years with the submit. I just want you.
While you're underperforming. So we still get the benefit of the money, but the restraints are lifted.
It's just a flawed, for lack of a better word, system. I mean, it was, you know, November, December, we got our last designation. You submitted a report to the state in January. You took the park again in April, but you don't get, you didn't get the, really, the opportunity to start implementing a lot of the stuff that was in the report that went in in January until really the next school year. I mean, I'm sure there was some loving improvement that maybe we were able to implement. It's just, it's just, it's... Yeah, I mean, that's a whole different conversation about the state and how they do things. I think what will be helpful when we, we're getting in here, updating on this. Yeah, so it would be really helpful to hear, especially for the schools that went from commendable to exemplary and then Parker from underperforming to commendable, you know, what, what changed? What was done differently in that short amount? Well, I mean, but we...
Remember, that would have been your A C, 19th...
You know, we did that, but...
So we can come back right now and say, in last year's plan, we recently believe that these stuffs generated results. Remember, this is all, this iteration we're talking about right now was from last April.
Right. This is from last April. And last April, we were still operating at, my thoughts aren't clear. I will put it in, you know, I mean, I just want to make sure that we are, that staff are clearly looking at sort of not just if growth happened, but the how in areas where it did not, and we can all articulate the areas where it did not, that we still have an understanding of that as well. So I think it's fantastic...
So I think as fantastic as our new rating system is, I just don't want us to get comfortable and sit here and, and believe that there still isn't a lot of awesome work that needs to be done. Um, I think all of our schools should be, um, you know, around the cause absolutely. But I just want to make sure this trend continues and we understand how and why it's continuing.
So be intentional.
Be intentional, you know, but also, you know, we have a lot of data, obviously, that we look at and, you know, staff look at way more than we do. And so, you know, we, we look at park data, we look at map data, we know where there are holes. You know, obviously, we just aren't able to know with the, you know, how to fix those. Um, but I do want to make sure that there is reflective learning happening and that people are able to articulate how this growth or lack thereof is happening.
So the best of our ability to be reasonably sure that we are, our behaviors are matching with what the data supports those being?
Exactly. I, I just, I don't want to, I want us to celebrate, but like, okay.
So far it's been good.
Are we doing what we need to continue to do so that next year is an exemplary or that our, some of our Commendable schools move up? Um, and I don't know what the tipping point is on the state's measure in terms of what makes you Commendable versus Exemplary. But, um, you know, we should always be growing. And in our areas where we all know we need, um, more attention, I just want to make sure we are, we don't forget that.
To your point, I, I, I agree. One of the things I, I ask the question oftentimes about what we all remember is, um, to, um, for all of our schools to actually achieve these, these, um, these, these rates. Again, you know, stuff is lost. I'm happy about that. But my question is like, how do we define growth? And that's where that question keeps popping up. What is that? Is this?
So the growth is 50% growth in the LA, 50% growth in math, standard proficiency, your science score, right? So this pie chart kind of tells us on this indicator what that growth is at. And then back to an earlier part of our conversation, the strategic plan will tell us what the board thinks is most important and how we want to measure all of those pieces. What are those growth indicators that we want to share, right? As we talked about earlier, a building that's our highest map growth building and our lowest IAR proficiency building. Will they ever be the highest in proficiency? I'm not sure, right? So the board will have to figure out how we're going to judge the success of each building in an objective way. And then, you know, just find, you know, the Commendable and Exemplary ratings are very public and that's just one indicator. But I think there's so much more to our district that we can measure and identify our, our success factors objectively that the board will want to, I agree, attach to our strategic plan.
Yes, I agree. I think, um, this is one measure. This is one data point that we will want to look at to truly get a, um, holistic picture of what growth looks like in our district.
One of the things about FADLAP, we did our presentations this week and I was talking to one of their data engineers. They are generating, I guess, called a return on investment report.
I heard you refer to AROI.
Yeah.
I could have heard return on investment.
Essentially, you can set that by program instead, but at the end of the day, this is what you're putting into your case. Here's a third grader. Have they seen the return on investment table? And then I suppose you could also look at as a, on grade level, you know, at high school, it's college or career, right? We can call it, you know, pick a grade level, right? But then we have those, we can build benchmarks to get this third, the other name. I'm not sure what that number is. Kind of talk about those things inside of it, then identify what those indicators are. If you look like this, you're considered ready for this grade level. If you don't, you're not considered ready. And then you need this, whatever this is.
Any other questions?
So speaking of Parker and the quality schools framework, we have an update.
And I'm very loud here.
While you are getting ready for your update, I will say, I mean, it was great over this past weekend in the president's roundtable as we're all talking about our schools. I mean, we have amazing things to talk about in our district. And so, um, I, I'm happy to say that I was, I believe, the only president in that room who did not have issues. I felt like something was wrong, you know? So I, I spent all my time actually promoting sort of board development for everybody that was at my table. Um, but this is a great story. I mean, so I don't want to discount our, um, our ratings. I mean, I want to celebrate, you know, to the extent that it makes sense for us to celebrate. So it's a great story to tell. Um, but our hope is that every year we have even rarer stories, starting with Parker.
All right. Yes. And to that point, the response from obviously the staff and the parents at Parker's been really great to the designations. If anything, um, to the points of all of the comments you guys made today. It's certainly not a, we've been relaxed and settled because we got, we came up from underperforming. But just that this is fuel, this is a little bit of caution we needed to know that we are doing some good things. And people like, certainly not let up. That's been my message to the staff and, um, and it's been received very well. So just wanted to start off with a few highlights and celebrations since the previous update. Our binary programs have been just really rocking it. No comments in this video. I have to do, I have to.
That's our energy.
Your best, your best friend in the church.
I have to charge for it. But we've just had an incredible start to this year with our binary arts programming. Our students perform every year at HF Youth Day. We had several students who auditioned at the collective of the IANEA at Junior Festival as well as the IANEA Jazz Festival and did special performances over the past month on the weekends. Um, our first orchestra concerts were incredible and several of our, you came to see our, our play in, uh, just two weeks ago. You may have just guys in Robin Hood.
Seems like yesterday.
It was just fantastic. It was a wonderful performance, very well attended. And our, our staff and students did an incredible job. It almost felt professional. Just a really, really great production.
Can we fix the microphone issue?
The sound system was, well, yes, thank you, Lennar.
So thank you both.
Um, and another celebration, uh, so this year we started doing quarterly awards programs with our students. Uh, really wanting to celebrate our students along the way, which is what we're doing for, into the school year, something. So we're planning on doing this every quarter. Uh, and there were two categories. There were student selected awards, there were students voted amongst their peers for awards like a student of integrity, a great friend, someone who's a great helper, someone who showed compassion. There were, there were many, many different awards. And then we had teacher selected awards like, um, a math master or a science scholar or a social studies scholar. Um, as well as like our P encore classes did like fuse awards and a music program. So we really just wanted to take an opportunity for our students to celebrate each other and also to see each other get recognized. That was very interesting because a lot of our students, so we haven't been doing this consistently at Parker. Uh, it was a really fun experience, but a lot of our students were really uncomfortable and sort of chatty and giddy about who's going to be called and who's going to be, do I, do I have to stand up? Should I stand up? Yes. Uh, you would think that junior high students would not get a kick out of getting a pencil or a plastic trophy, a certificate. Let me tell you, they loved it. There were students who kept their trophies on their desk for two weeks. And every morning would walk in and put their trophy down. So it was just really great. Uh, icing on the cake is that it was led by a local broadcast team. They completely created the presentation, the corny jokes in between the award, um, the music, everything. One of our students DJed. It was just really cool. So we were very proud of our students and looking forward to continuing to do it.
Can you forward some videos to me?
Well, I don't know if I have each grade level of video. I'll, I'll see what I can find. We did it by grade level. And, um, the other thing that I wanted to mention is that uh, the students did a really good job of not sort of booing each other or sort of giving each other a long, at least not out loud for the rest of, you know, sneakers amongst the crowd. But they, they were very respectful of each other and they allowed each other to be celebrated even though not every kid in the class was getting an award. So I'm just incredibly proud of our students and our staff. And just another celebration, our Take a Veteran to School Day program. Uh, we invited veterans in the community who have children at Parker and just invited them to share their experience and tell about their lives serving our country. And our students had questions that they had to ask and, um, some really heartfelt and emotional responses from the veterans, uh, shared about their lives. And our students had to complete an activity in the social studies classes afterwards reflecting on what they learned from the veterans. Um, it was a great opportunity for our kids to have experiences learning about people in their community. So again, one of our big goals this year is to really just improve the school life student experience. Um, taking the opportunities that we can to create a better, more thoughtful and intentional experience for kids.
Do you know whether or not, I know Western also did the veterans, um, honored veterans. Do the other schools do that as well? Do you know where the idea came from to do that?
Um, our, the project that we use was from the street channel. We have also sort of contact and curriculum and we give students templates for the questions and follow-up activities as well. So again, going back to the things that we are focused on in our school improvement plans on the board, Big Rocks, PDIS. If you recall, we have an additional segment for, two additional segments for PDIS coordinators this year, which has been incredibly helpful for a school the size of Parker to really do PDIS right. Uh, we need people that at each grade level that can be invested in the program. Uh, so we're still focusing on consistent implementation, um, giving out the Parker bucks. We're doing our monthly pool tools lesson and we're doing our, our monthly student rewards. We're always looking for ways to, uh, increase and sort of keep the rewards and celebrations exciting for the kids as we get into this kind of a school year. It can get more challenging to keep the kids excited for something and looking forward to something. So we're always looking for new ideas around that.
So the PDIS, and then I'm kind of reflecting back on your, you did Blue Hisse and Bro Tomato Jack. Um, is there any way to, to kind of, I don't know if you can tell, measure or tell having a, moving the needle?
Yeah. So there's, that's an example of anecdotal success, which could be traced back, I believe is traced back to consistent PDIS implementation. Also just, um, having setting expectations for students along the way. Uh, in a little bit, we'll talk about our, our PDIS next level of tier two, three, which uses student referral data and other data to really track how we, on databases, how are we improving student behavior in a specific way. So we look for both. We look for the day-to-day anecdotal interactions that are being better. Uh, examples like the student awards program to me mean a lot more than a number because it means we're making strides as, as a student body to be respectful.
Yeah. And the reason I ask that is because I remember when we were doing a walkthrough of Parker, um, and there was a discussion about, as you kind of go from where the sixth graders are to where the seventh graders are, where the eighth graders are, you could almost see some behavioral differences.
Sure.
And the objective is to try to figure out some way to.
Level things.
Yeah. And, and I don't know how you, is that being done or not? It's kind of also.
Yeah. I think it's also, I don't think it's as simple as sixth grade to seventh grade. I think it also depends on the class. Um, as I would say, eighth grade is, remind me, I think eighth grade is one of our, I shouldn't be saying this out loud, eighth grade is, is doing a fantastic job. Not that sixth grade and seventh grade aren't, um, but I think it depends on the mix of students. It depends on the context of the, that we are. Uh, so getting to David's question, um, some of the things that we are still digging deep with on PDIS is getting the, the tier one, the 80% strong. We feel like we are doing a good job of that. We feel like we're making strides with most students. They're starting to understand what the general expectations are, whether it's in the hallway or in the lunchroom, um, had very little, if any, major issues in the lunchroom this school year. We feel like our students are really understanding, I'm sorry? Not much. Now, but you're still, yeah. We'll take it as we got. But, but our students are getting the general, uh, expectation down. Right now, we're really in the midst of digging into our tier two, three, uh, structures and making sure that we're doing the right wraparound support for students who are showing uh, more severe behaviors beyond the, the tier one level. Um, and really it comes down to everything from making sure that every kid in the building has somebody at least that they go to, that they can talk to, um, they can express themselves, they're having a finger moment. Or they're having some additional support that they have someone. Um, we're using our really revamping the check-in, check-out processes at Parker, which, um, have been consistent in the past and we're trying to tighten that up. It, it all goes back to building strong relationships with students. Uh, another thing that, that we introduced since the previous update are positive office referrals. So we have teachers write positive referrals for students to meet. Um, we call them down to the office and they kind of think they're getting in trouble. But when they come to the office, we share the topic of feedback with them and they're kicking the prize. So a little anxiety increase for the kids, but. And then, I'm starting to lose swag though. Yeah. Like, well, I think they're catching on also consistently at the same time every week. So they're, they're on to me. Uh, instructional expectations. So, uh, we've been on focus this school year at Parker, really stressing the point and maximizing instructional time. Uh, we know that time is always something that we're playing a chess game with, but really making sure that we're getting into classrooms and giving teachers feedback. Are you using your time effectively? And there's a continuum of that. Maybe it's, um, you know, we certainly don't want to see complete waste of time. Um, but if there are also better instructional choices that teachers can be making to really, really maximize every minute of every period, uh, we're, we're pushing the envelope on that. Uh, the most learning, if you, if you recall back to our ESO work plan last year, this was a resource that we added that's a IAR-based, uh, practice tool for students. They take three IAR practice tests throughout this school year. And in between, they get remedial mediation practice on the standards that they are showing efficiencies with. And so we're utilizing our enrichment time to be able to, again, maximize that time more effectively. Uh, and we will, we took our first WULS test, we'll take our second one in January and we'll take our third one in March before we have the IAR test after spring break. Again, still working on station teaching and parallel teaching. How we recruit teachers that are going to the co-teaching conference, uh, soon, very soon.
Next week.
Next week. Yes. Yeah. Um, and hit, bring in back some board strategies around effective co-teaching practices. If you recall, that's how, that is our special education, uh, model at Parker. And so we're really, really focused on making sure that as much as possible in a co-teaching setting that we're getting all the benefit that we can out of having two fresh shoulders in the classroom. That's great.
Where is the conference?
In the city, Chicago or Shamba. Yeah, it's north, the north.
So we're sending one of our instructional coaches and then two of our co-teachers to the conference. And all of us are going to the conference. And then our Saturday school program, um, our Saturday school and our after-school programs are some of the, you mentioned the additional academic supports that we've added uh, from the ESO work plan last year. Our Saturday program is provided by Massachussetl. They do ELA tutoring for students from nine AM until twelve PM. And then we've been doing some kind of incentive after the tutoring is over for the students. Currently, we have twenty-two students who have been coming consistently. That's not a huge number of students. We invited students based on their IAR data, looking at students who were falling below. And that number originally started closer to a hundred that were on that list. After calls and emails and reaching out, it doesn't seem like a large number of students. But to give some context, last year we were down to, and sometimes having two or three students showing up for Saturday school. So we do feel like this is a good improvement from last year. And these same students have been showing up every week. So we're not sort of getting a pop in for, I mean, help with my homework and I'm only showing up that weekend. Hoping to see measurable change with these students.
Are these students, the same, a carryover from last year? Are we seeing that, I'm going to put it on the subject of improvement? How are we determining whether or not, we just agreed or approved the Massachussetl programs in the state? For their reason?
No. He had it last year.
And sometimes how the programs can do?
Yeah, so if I'm understanding correctly, these students were based on, selected these students based on their spring, their IAR scores in the spring. The program gives the students a diagnostic assessment on the first week and they do monitoring throughout the program. And then they give a sort of end test or summary at the end to see how we go. But we do get feedback.
Must be the snacks.
It's all about, we've been doing pizza for the past two weeks.
Oh, that's not a snack.
No, yeah, we had to up the, up the recipe to, yeah. And then just some additional things that are coming up for our events. So obviously, our parent teacher conferences this evening, which had a really good turnout so far earlier in the day. Well, we will be doing our second quarter student rewards program and refining that because we learned a lot from doing it the first time and so hopefully make it better for the second quarter. Our Black History Month program that we're working on right now. And then our PTO has been doing a great job of inviting speakers every month. Last year, we had a bully prevention program come to speak to the PTO, trying to get more pairs out. And so we start with a speaker and then we move into the actual PTO. So that's, that's been really nice.
And that has, do you have any PTO attendance?
Yeah, I don't have the numbers, but it definitely has been a increase in attendance at the meetings compared to last year. And then what's coming up in our opportunities for growth? Again, continuing to work on the Tier 2.3 behavior structures and support for students. I will say there have been, well, we feel like we've made strides with overall culture and climate amongst the students and the staff at Parker. There's been more behavior disturbances and in particular, physical altercations that are really unhappy with this year. So we're trying to find the right balance of obviously, I mean, the consequences for those things, but also what's behind it? What's the relationship with the adult and the students and peer-to-peer that we can strengthen to, and know about those situations, most of the time we know before it's going to happen. Sometimes we don't know. How to make sure every student has someone that they can confide in, that they can trust. And I think we're getting better at it, but it's a constant work in progress.
We found that it's a particular grade that tends to be more placed even others.
In terms of physical altercations?
Yes.
Not necessarily. Looking at this, for example, the past month's data, this has been more in seventh, I'm sorry, more in sixth grade, which is, but which is very different than how it was in the previous month.
Right, I mean, I'm just trying to always, and again, this is from, you know, board seat. Just in terms of looking at this because, you know, again, thirty-five, some years ago, you know, there's similar things.
Sure.
That existed. But just even noticing the last seven years that like there's some years where, boy, the seventh graders seem to be really agitated or wow, the sixth graders this year. You know, even looking at, you know, kids that come through Western where my kids have gone to school, like they said, wow, this group of fifth graders tends to be a little bit more agitated than, oh, this is a little class group. So I guess I would also, you know, be interested to know, you know, to find out what trends are carrying from grade schools into, or if it's really a matter of transition is, you know. I'm sure it's not any one thing, but.
Yeah, it never is one thing. I will say at this point in the school year, I think we can no longer see it as a matter of transition from elementary school into junior high. Students have started to form relationships that are new, that are somewhat carryover from, from elementary school as well. But it really is never one thing. And it really is about just making sure that we are staying on top of things and that as much as possible, we know that every student has a relationship with an adult, that they feel confident enough to say, I need to let you know what's going on. And that we can help when things do happen, we have the tools to be able to repair those relationships so that it doesn't happen again.
Can you go back to the communication slide? I want to ask you a question about that. So I ran across one of our vendors and I was talking about this, Apogee. And they commended Parker for putting a lot of updates, nuggets, photos or whatever in that communication. Is there a way to find out what, how effective that is actually being? I know we kind of talked about that a little bit, chunk of the number.
If you tell us what effective means, yes, you can tell you anything. We're pulling the download rates now, but I don't know if that tells us the fact of this. We're not going to get a click or a time kind of report from Apogee. I don't know, just we can do it through contact, we can do it through some of the other things that we use, but that's a good thing.
I guess if you tell us kind of answer my question on communication is that, I know one of the things I like to see is that we're trying to maximize opportunity to reach community. And I think the newsletter, the website, the updates, team, all that's great. And Apogee is another opportunity. And so I'm hoping that not just Parker, but with all our schools, we're trying to really emphasize and publicize and let parents know this mechanism for communication. And so I don't know how we.
I agree with you. Yeah, if you notice that we're not, we can kind of dig into that, but I've not heard that we're not posting up the data information as I checked the pulling webpages around your way.
Just so the feedback I've heard is that it's always improving. And that certainly in the last seven years, I worked with a, a department chair, district media critic who's always asking me, what I'm doing to improve, you know, that, me and my wife. And she has, you know, noticed improvement, but certainly we have given them growth. And just to put this in context of, you know, the very concerted effort at Massachussetl eight years ago to be very intentional about their communications, you know, nothing happened overnight. And it's really is something that you roll out and roll out. Because even in the last, the strategic planning workshops I attended at the tri-conference, they had some really interesting ideas about other ways you can get the word out in terms of their strategic plans on the community to really be involved with. You know, these are things that, you know, we talked about on the communication committee. And, you know, certainly, you know, we're always open to topics and suggestions to discuss them.
Years ago.
I'm sorry. Just something, what is the commentary? So for the Black History Month program, like what does that typically, are you still warm feeling that you might, what it'll look like?
Yeah, so it has not bummed out everyone yet, but we are looking at bringing in.
Don't give us any secrets.
Right, don't give any secrets. Why? Well, some good secrets. Because it's a little bit, right, I don't give them. All I was going to say is that if, and I, and I want to mess up whatever you have, think you're planning. But if you, the lunch to dance group, and they could come in. And so if you wanted to think about it, then I can, I know somebody.
I think that will be very nicely with what we're planning and I'm not going to say on camera.
Cam, I'm sorry, I didn't know. If that didn't work out for this, I'd even be good.
Oh, I, I know, I know the guy well. Right, thanks. Okay. Okay, we'll talk for a couple of minutes, I don't think you can. But what I was going to say about communication, there was a time when we actually used to do the town hall meetings. You know, and Cam and I talked about that over this past weekend after, you know, the tri-conference. I mean, in the beginning, I think they worked well. And then I think participation started dwindling for a variety of reasons that we don't have to go into now. But, and then I think one year we went to like having a videotaped message for communication.
Yes, so it was, it was not an, you know, ill-intended, you know, thing. It was actually, it sounded great, like, you know, state of the district. And I think seven people showed up, including, you know, five principals.
Yeah, towards that. But in the first one or two though, because it was typically the beginning of the school year. And so it was a way to capture all new parents in the district. And for everybody to get the same information, the same message from our district leader at one time.
The way it was structured and the question came up, you know, well, you know, why wouldn't somebody come if they didn't have a reason? And so other, you know, we've had town hall sort of things here around discipline. We've had a lot of angry people or raised things. We've also had great success, and I think to an earlier comment, where we had food here that were a food event and then people came because it became something that, you know, people interested in. And I think that, you know, moving forward as we look at ways to engage the community, you know, there's a lot of great ideas. Sometimes, you know, things drop out, but, you know, there's opportunities for them to come back. But the big issue with attendance for, for some of those grand ideas were they were really based on a lot of assumptions that people wanted something that were not aligned with what was, you know, being offered on the day.
Well, a part of it is, and we don't have to discuss this now, you know, when you call something a town hall, then it has this, you know, your mind goes to immediately to this place is where you're going because you've got issues.
Yeah.
So, but something to think about.
And I, I just want to make sure that we, we have some successes now to talk about at Parker. And I think a year ago, we did. So we, we just got to try to figure out a way to get that out as much as I can.
But that means that we're not doing, so I just need to push back a little bit because I, I would tend to think that we haven't done it.
I'm not saying, and I'm not saying we haven't, but I'm just saying that we need to continue to try. And that's why I think when we're here in Seattle, find a way to continue to try to get the work out more and more. Because one, one of the things.
But I just need to unpack it because there's, there's insinuations there that we, that we aren't great. So I get what you're saying, but do you have ideas on what that looks like? Because we already do formal press release and formal press release, social media, Twitter, Facebook, Instagram, or social media.
I'll speak it a different way. I'd like to see the narrative be as such that we change what the community is proceeding, what Parker is doing, into a much more positive outlook that Parker's performing, that, that, that should be the result.
Yes, there were distractors, I think. There's, I always see this, always, when I look out, you know, graduation, I see a scene of kids who want some really great award and have done some amazing things. It's, it really is heartening to see you spend some time with these, you know, in this organization. And this is it, the kids are, you know, as a quality group of people, this is really, you know, something. But sometimes it's overshadowed by, you know, even one of the graduations I spoke at, somebody passed out. And so, you know, it kind of drew attention, but wasn't it? Well, but, you know, things happen during the year where, you know, fantastic, you know, from sports to academics to, you know, service projects, you know, art. And that the narrative is captured by, you know, you know, somebody put a YouTube video of, you know, edited YouTube video of, you know, their son having stuff with someone else and their son lost, you know. And then that just took up all the oxygen in the room. And so you have, you may have really heard the great story.
But it sounds like what I'm hearing is your question, or you're, you're not questioning quantity or the different, the number of outlets used to communicate. What you're asking about is the messaging that's going out. I think what Dana is saying is that, that positive messaging is going out. Maybe, you know, we could do more or, I mean, I see it all the time on social media where, you know, the community can focus a lot of energy on something negative and then a community member will say, let me give you something more positive to talk about today. Because did you hear this story about what happened at Parker? So, you know, to the extent that we can get out in front and make sure, you know, on a weekly basis, there's some feel-good information that's coming out from the district. And I know it comes in a variety of ways. So just to continue to do that and, you know, I also think, I mean, we're ambassadors for the district, right? And it's incumbent upon all of us to make sure, you know, we are also talking about positive things and redirecting energy. And Cam, I know you do that a lot on social media.
I just, that's totally just.
That's okay. So I think that's what it is, it's not quantity. I think, you know, I don't know what else we could be doing, you know.
I think it is a fundamental nature of this job that when you're, no one's going to come, no one is going to. We had a meeting, I was all great here at all, having a partner. It's just a job. And, you know, people show up and they're angry and so I, and I would suggest that the number of people who write, mean, complaining things on social media will never change. We'll see, well, you can tell how well we're doing by how stupid those posts are. If you read them and you're like, oh, that doesn't make a point, then maybe we're not doing too well. And if you read them and you're like, that is the most ridiculous thing I've ever heard, then if that's the biggest thing that you just made about, then we don't care. So I, no one's, no one's going to come on, well, that'll happen. Sometimes people come to you and tell you that they're doing a good job, but for the most part, happy to come.
I mean, maybe there's a way at the end of the year to highlight all of the great stuff that's happened, you know, in the district. Either at, you know, end of the year celebrations or whatever. But there, maybe there's a way to capture that there so that, that might be a good place. Because, you know, we did it last year, the whole goal of doing the end of the year celebration was so that, you know, we could play a role in how students and families left the district before it started, right? And so in, you know, as many positive notes as we can might be a great idea. So if there's a way that we can have all of our great work highlighted or just highlights for each, just each school or something.
I, I was just going to say, I feel like the narrative about Parker has changed dramatically. I feel like every person I talk to. I feel like every person I talk to talks about how much they love the administrative team, and about just how much more positive it feels, so I feel like that's happening. I think even on Facebook, even there's some of the craziness, there seems to always be some, he says what he says, but there's this, this, and this. So, I don't know, I mean, I'm not in every circle, but I'm certainly in quite a few, and there are a lot of people who are saying that it feels very differently, and teachers too, students too. So, I think it's shifting, I mean, we don't have as many folks coming here to our students or something, which I believe is a good thing.
So just last thing, we, as mentioned earlier with the, as a plan, so we do not do the formal work plan as we did last year, Parker had a number of formal reading. We do need to still do the elementary quality school framework, which is, we did last year as well, which is the self-reflection that the building leadership team does, as well as parent input. So we are working on that, it measures, asks schools to reflect on several standards around school improvement. It's strictly self-reflective, there's not, the state, we need the state to not come back and say, "We disagree with you." But in addition to that, we need to share our school improvement plan with the state, which would be sufficient for a requiredness moving forward without the underperforming rate. So that's something that the building leadership team is working on right now, and will be partnering with the GTO to get the parental consent as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate your show, too.
Thank you.
Recycling program.
Sure, we're looking at the initial investment of $922, and evolving costs of around $3,200 per year to run the recycling program by the green team in the buildings. Part of that, a very small part of it will be potentially some increased recycling costs, but really, it's all materials, and it's getting all the different bids, you can see those buckets too, promote sustainable food containers at lunchtime, you know, curd carts to take all of the things out. That'll save Joan Holler from digging into the trash if we have our diversity dinners, because she's gonna take all the stuff home to recycle, and so.
I just have one question, because this is significantly less than-
No, don't choose.
But will the paper bins need to be replaced annually?
I don't think so. No, thanks Joan Holler, thanks to the green teams, thanks to Scott for supporting their work. It's an island of class with kids, it would be very exciting. And it incorporates a lot of those ideas that were brought before, I don't, no, I'm not, I'm not willing to say that. I think it responds to those, but I don't know that incorporates all of those. The question, the concept was, we're not recycling enough stuff, and now we are. So we're capturing the plastics, and those sorts of pieces.
Progress.
I think, I think this is, again, our first step. Because if, you know, in theory, we can get down to potentially meeting a dumpster or some larger capacity container into the buildings, once we get really good at separating all those pieces. I'm sure this, I'm sure this will cause the green team participation to excel, because as, you know, kids are really good at sustaining their lunches in the cafeteria, and some kids are, you know, dumping out milk, carbons, that's just an attractive job for whatever reason. We have third grid, so I think it will help generate some student excitement, and then to David's point, then we can say, "Okay, now we do a larger container, what does this gonna mean for other sustainability processes?"
It's more potential student warrants, too.
I'm sure, oh, yeah.
Okay, policy updates and first reading of revised policies.
Yes, several policies, which will turn over to Eric, but basically, if you had, look at the chart in the report, it kind of gives you an idea of where there's a footnote only, a no change, or the ones that really, really need a good first read, because there's some substantive changes. Eric, you wanna highlight?
The only one, there's actually two, two colon, two ten organizational school board meeting, it's a new policy that was not currently adopted, the process separated that out. And then, and two colon, one ninety mailing lists for senior board materials. The legal reference from that was repealed in 2012, so that policy is no longer in effect. So we suggest revising action, just removing that from the current policy.
Essentially, that two two, two, two ten speaks to your speed, which you need to see.
Okay. So any other questions?
This is the end of the section two update, so these will be brought back in December for second read and approval. And since there's only one board meeting in December, I will bring section three for first read. Please don't throw anything at me. I've got the policy update planned out through next September, and it'll be done.
Okay, thank you. Cybersecurity audit.
Yeah, I thought we had the actual ones. That could be, which I have downloaded. But as Leonard and I have been talking, and as you might have already seen in the news, cybersecurity attacks, specifically ransomware, where that renders a network completely useless, having issues. Anytime you do a nice job, Leonard's keeping that going. We want to make sure that we do have a pretty ironclad system. We have had some people fall victim to phishing, phishing attacks frankly, that just cost them some dignity and a little bit of money, but those were on our network. And if it wasn't a financial scam to them, it could have been something much worse. And so we want to take a look for now, it'll cost about $15,000 for net fifty-six, and a dedicated cybersecurity group to go through, take a look at the network, run a number of tests, give us a note of, here's where you are, here's where the best practices are. Now we need to choose a pathway, how aggressive do you want to be, do you want Cadillac, do you want Chevy? And then help us put that plan in place.
I completely agree with the need for the audit, that's not the question. I also disagree with your statement that oftentimes users open doors, or some, how do you, there are things you can do that stop users opening their doors. So I guess, I just would like a little bit more of an explanation, like the $15,000?
That's, I think that's for the engineers. So we can, for example, when we had our phishing attack earlier in the year, email came from me. Except it wasn't me, and I personally clicked on it. If you, if they knew what to look for, it would have been probably a different result. So Leonard has run some tests on our end, we have sent emails, here's where you're looking for, if it's too good to be true, it's certain.
Yes.
Here's what people will never do, they'll never ask you for the money, we already have all the information, we're not gonna ask for your information, those sorts of things. Part of this will be, and I don't remember the specific example, but essentially, if you want a larger ransomware attacks, it was an open port on some server, right? Leonard can't find those, and he's working to find those, but this puts us in a position to identify any of those. So an open port would be accessible for game, you should, you'll find it. Once you find it, you get it. So this provides engineers to do that work.
Can we find a Kia? Like, you want a count?
This is the Kia price.
This is the Kia.
Ah, yes, so, so the legal references are, if there was a local municipality to pay $150,000 in ransom, it wasn't very local, because they got a phishing attack on their entire system for a period. And that was in part due to, the systems were all in Florida design, so like, you sort of basically had like a key base on one computer. And that's common, and so I think the unfortunate reality is that recommendations we receive, if we plan it all, would probably cost us a hundred thousand dollars. A good chunk of best practices do these days has to do with policies and training, so this work probably is on Eric's test. For examples, I mean, I know that in my firm, there's some phishing thing going on, so we have a policy that if you screw up once, we get a talking to you, and if you screw up twice, you may be fired. And this applies to all the partners in that. Because, and so, unfortunately, some of that HR aspect doesn't have to be put in place, because there's no technological solution to defending a good phishing attack. So it'll be interesting, you're earning $15,000, I'm gonna edit it later, for access, I've gotten pitched for enough clients that are thousands of dollars. I assume they pay $150,000, $500,000 for it, so.
To your point, one of the things that I know also occurs, and maybe it's more the threat, perceived threat, that Big Brother's watching, so is that something that might end up coming out with us?
Which Big Brother do you? We are watching everything.
Well, oftentimes, what that means is that they, the staff, or like, finds out that, wow, Big Brother actually watching, and so then that curtails the usage.
We do share, there's no expectation of privacy.
And we're on Google, I mean, the top management mission is there. And then, so it'll cover some, so the report will tell you, you know, open ports will tell you, you know, this software you're running on your system, they'll calibrate all the software, and be like, each piece of the software are dedicated, should be running. These pieces have open APIs, have known security for attacks. They'll do all that. I assure you the report will be impressive. But I just, I just had, I was doing emergency on Saturday, they don't want any ports in, you know, but it was, I think, kind of like, what can we do? Now?
And, yeah, with the, with the rise in technology usage, especially as we go more and more, I mean, I get that, again, the value in it. I was just making sure that it kind of just spots, you said.
I have a question. Why in it fifty-six, I was curious.
Trust.
Okay.
Trust, a number of, frankly, either districts I've been involved with, or colleagues have used them for this specifically. They have larger relationships with them on the managed side, and I don't think we're there yet, but one of the things that Leonard and I have talked about, just as we're looking at the structure of the tech department, is are there opportunities to leverage some managed services, I don't know if we're ready yet. But, you know, and again, to Cam's point, three months ago, it all gets into these revolving kind of costs, and that's what managed services is. When we did our last round with hiring for our most recent technician, we are not currently in the stratosphere in management. And so, at some point, it may come down, especially with, you know, really robust job market, it may come down to having to contract with a company that we pay tens of thousands of dollars to, but then we have access to level-three engineers that typically would cost six figures on their own. We have access to them, I mean, now, you know, we can scale those, and again, we're not ready for that yet, I think. I trust Leonard, I trust our team. We're not.
As we look at the issues, and it's probably too much, but what about consolidating some IT services with thirty-three and one twenty-three?
Absolutely.
So, so once they do this audit, then, and they say, here are the things that you need to do, they can help us do those things, that's one option, or they can also put us on a path to, here's, go call these people.
Right, well, yes. So, well, I would say, they would say, "We can do this for you, here's how much it costs."
It should be like a third of things they would do for you, a third will be things that Leonard, that's what I wonder.
A third will be HR policy.
To Cam's point, one, one-third of those could be reaching out to two thirty-three, probably, because they're just a larger organization, they may have more people to help us. Say, "Look, here's what we're trying to do, who do you have on staff who can help with this? What would that cost us if we," very similar to in the management. So, what would it cost us for you, us to purchase some time from some of your staff members? You may have a strong background in this area, more time to do it, Leonard can sit down, or Art can kind of go through those and work on those projects. I do have experience doing that with, between two districts.
Thank you. Just two things, one, on that note, you're saying that they would bill out their tech guide that they have on staff for our specific needs, or is that, if we ask?
Attention.
Attention. My other question was related to the vulnerability with the phishing. You know, staff is one thing, you know, where there's clear expectations of professionalism, and you are not in your personal server, you know. Yes, please know that Big Brother is watching, I'm Big Brother, I'm telling you, don't do this. What about the students that we have here who have email addresses, who lack a broader sense of understanding why you shouldn't be clicking on a million things? To what degree do they create a vulnerability in our network?
Oh, well, I don't know that this is largely a thing, because those email addresses are pretty tightly monitored.
Mostly, mostly internal, so most of student email addresses are purely internal, so the, the bigger part of that is making sure we protect those, our, those devices that sit on the outside of our network. By the time they get in there to where we're talking like student emails and things like that, I mean, we've, we obviously have to solve other problems that we should have addressed before, so that, you know, comes kind of fast.
And then, you know, the layer beyond that, so the students are receiving the phishing emails, they're clicking on all sorts of ridiculous things, if they can get to them. Our filter is, it's pretty tight.
Pretty, yeah.
And that's fine, and that prevents quite a bit of it, but that would be the next one.
Do we filter things that are sent to teenagers, so that there are spikes that pop up with things like, "Great opportunity, make lots of money," you know, things, something that is more of a phishing language.
And, you know, obviously, that language comes through, usually, this may be a phishing, big yellow alert right at the top of the email. Oh, yeah, a lot of that stuff's pulled up, but even, so after editing the presentations this last weekend, several people from all over the state emailed, "Hey, wanted to talk about this, wanted to talk about that," and most of those were flagged, just because they were random one-offs that did not come through.
Any other questions? Special education audit.
And I just uploaded some updated pricing, so originally, not to jump to the end, I shared some pricing, it was between $10,000 and $15,000, this audit, the quote, the actual quote that I got is for $10,000, and the length is about six weeks total, but there's a number of areas that this audit will look at specifically. It's done by two professionals in the field, Dr. Tim Thomas, former superintendent of NSSBD, which is the North Suburban Special Education District, which is primarily has North Shore, and then Dr. Judy Hackett, who's current superintendent of NSSEO, which captures some, I would say, collar companies in the North and West Region, both very large districts. The two couldn't have any more accolades on their levels, in all respects in the field, he's actually a federal lobbyist for Illinois on behalf of school districts. But really, as I listen to the board, what we're trying to get to is just a complete look at our special education department, things we're doing well, things we're doing, there are opportunities for improvement. This looks at all of them, you know, the, obviously, starting with your vision, admission, and leadership, and then all the way down through how we're allocating our resources and our finances, covering everything. Obviously, starting with your vision, admission and leadership, and then all the way down through how we're allocating our resources and our finances, covering everything between to service delivery. So one of the things we have talked about is how do we service kids? In our learning instruction committee today, we talked about, we have obviously general education classrooms, we have resource services, we have some self-contained classrooms, other self-contained classrooms are at speed, et cetera. So this will look at all of those different pieces to make sure that. We have our goals, that the steps that we're taking to meet those goals are effective and then do align the best practices. As we're talking about co-teaching or stationary co-teaching, what can you, as we're talking about resource, whether it's replacement or in-class support, whether that's the best practice for those students. We know that we have some pretty large achievement gaps in a number of different places, special education being one of them, low income students being another. But to Michelle's point, our, we moved out of performance commendable ad partner, super deep rate. We still have work to do. And our messaging around our asset designations already in general has been, yes, this is nice, but we have work to do. As we get better at these completed, as five lab really exposes our strengths and our weaknesses more effectively. This gives us an opportunity to take a wholesale look at the department, should take about six weeks to complete, but come in, you know, pull out IEPs, take a look at those. Make sure that everything is where it should be, compliance wise, we're embracing, no concerns about the state expectations for how we run our special education department. Not, not comes down to, are the best practices in the field? Where are we? Where's that difference? And what do we have to do next?
Have they done something like this before?
Yes, so this is a research based kind of format that they've developed with leaders across the state. They're in the middle of several of them now, that's why it's the April first kind of target to begin. So timeline wise, looking at strategic plan that comes to you, hopefully for approval in February. Coming out of that work, it'll be directed from the board that our department's going to go and create the agreements for June that will launch in July. You know, it's going to meet those first year goals by, you know, June thirtieth, twenty one, essentially. So as everyone's working, obviously, this audit would be in place, I'd ask that it's done by mid, middle of May, talk to the board about it, rather, there's plenty of time to put together the actual plan and the next steps based on the audit. To meet the, whatever special education requirements or our strategic plan.
So there wouldn't, there wouldn't be a stark audit in April of two thousand twenty?
No, yes, April of twenty twenty. Even if they started the audit now, I don't, I don't know that I would recommend major changes. I mean, obviously, we're not going to let a good idea in the way of planning, but they will come back, just like with the tech audit, they'll come back with a number of things that we should do. It comes down to human bandwidth, that, whether it's training, whether it's time, whether it's just the ability for us to make a course correction in March.
In your communication with them, did they mention anything in terms of like how often you should review your program? And I say this thinking about, we had this, but looked to me as a very good audit of our gifted program years ago, by one question. And a lot of really great ideas that kind of fell by the wayside, you know, gifted is also a special name. And, and sometimes kids are twice exceptional, they're gifted and they have, you know, some particular combination you need to do that. And I believe at the time, they mentioned something to the effect that every four years was a good idea to pull in a third party and look very critically from the outside. And no matter how you're doing, and get a very clear idea and some recommendations that you can have discussions. Did they, in that way, did they make any?
Didn't discuss timeline specifically, but they're in the process now of working with districts that have completed an audit in support and saying, okay, your toll one's in, ideal. You said you were going to do X, Y, and Z. One, did you do that? I think we can do that part of it. But also, what were the intended consequences or the unintended consequences? Do you need help moving forward now? Do you need feedback on what to do next?
Okay, again, this is always, everything in education is a moving target, you know, special ed is a special. And we have, you know, as from my understanding, you know, the cohort that we have, it starts and is constantly changing throughout, more so perhaps than some of our other student studies.
Yeah, probably, but again, you know, this stuff gets down to best practices, right? So as long as we're implementing the best practices, if we can do that at a pretty high rate, whether it's just general education, gifted education, special education specifically. In this case, we're giving our kids and our teachers the best opportunity to be successful. So I think what, what we do after receiving the audit and setting up that first department plan for twenty twenty one, we decide what that looks. You know, yes, we want you guys to come back in May, we'll have a full year under our belt of implementing. And then it's a good time to do a quick check in. And then obviously, if there's year two of those goals, we're expecting a five year strategic plan. So, you know, whether or not we pace the audit recommendations out over five years is, as we're on the floor, we determine how aggressive to be. Moving forward, then, we just, we build that into your measurement.
I just have a couple of questions. I don't know how detailed you thought in your conversations with them, but the review process, what are district artifacts?
They would be.
The online documentation, because you mentioned.
Yeah, it would be IEPs, it would be any of those documents during the special education. Could be the grant, could be those.
Our tech board.
Yeah, push. It's a financial.
And in the research world, do you actually stay? And then who might they consider interviewing as part of the stakeholder group members?
Well, I believe from my understanding and conversation with Tim, we staff numbers, administrators, parents who are affected. And this could be a good intersection for that, for the education committee. There'll be some very strong stakeholders in that group, both respected on special education, and what it looks like in our district.
Because I see the placeholder for administrators and then the second placeholder is for stakeholder group members. So I think that would be fantastic if that includes all those members that you just said. Teachers.
Yes. I'll verify, but that was my understanding.
Okay. And then at the conclusion of this report, will they be reporting out to the board? Any other questions, Tom?
I did receive one other name of somebody to talk to, I've reached out to him, he's in copper in a current position. But he has, he had done some work at the state level, so as I spoke with him, I'm not sure what this is going to look like moving forward. But he gave us some ideas as we were, as I was looking at this process of what it could be as we're doing our audit. And a lot of the things that we talked about really came out in kind of that cases review that was attached. As far as the comprehensive nature of the audit, all the different areas that he wants to look for hidden opportunities. So I feel really good about this process. I'm not sure what I can think about Tim, before Tim and I worked together decades ago, as much as he's probably retired and still working. But again, two very well respected people, I believe Judy is president of the.
At the NAC?
Yep, so the Special Education Administrators Group. So I'm very confident in our ability to deliver a good product to us.
Okay, thank you. Residency updates?
As you know, we are constantly looking at residency. This could be a tricky situation, but one other thing is unpaid job through the registration process. And the residency verification process as well, how students do slip through, who provide information that's inaccurate and they're allowed to register. So what we do is, as we identify those kids, there's a credible thought that they do not live in our district. We have contracts with Chicago Land Investigative Services at the recommendation of our law firm, we use. Now it's national?
National.
National investigations in the past, we had a number of those investigations come back with a lot of information that wasn't actionable. This is a legal process. One of the first things that we have to do now, that the law has changed, we notify all these people who we've identified, they do not live here, but also here's all of our evidence in the past. We kind of found that back, you had your hearing, you go from there. So we've provided all those people with information, they do not live here, they can schedule a hearing, we'll bring all proper people to that, we'll notify out of doubt just, and we'll be our representative on the residency hearings. I'm imagining these families decided to fight it, we have another five that are going in for investigations, and we'll move forward with that process. It's expensive, very expensive. It includes sitting outside a house at five o'clock in the morning and sitting outside a house at ten thirty at night, traveling all around the place. We have people who, you know, travel in from, you know, a suburb twenty minutes away. Student gets to the house that is on their residency information about five thirty in the morning and then doesn't get back to their house where they live until about eight thirty at night. So trying to track all of that down takes a long time and these students will be losing.
Okay, I just want to make sure, just a quick question. So previously, there was a contractor who wasn't able to, at the time, just find actionable cases. So we went to this contractor in hopes of finding, yeah, if you're not turning up actual cases. And I'm saying that again, we're not finding actual cases, we're still, so we've identified them, but we still can't take action?
No, we have got a product system. So I would say they're all, they're all generally actionable, but again, you know, it's not enough to know that they don't live here. You have to know where your children sleep. You don't know where they sleep, then they sleep in your district. So in order to do that, yeah, you're out at five in the morning, you're out at.
Midnight.
This company's, and not that the other company did not do that before, but the quality of the other edge.
They left holes in their case.
First one or this first? So this one.
Is legit.
Will have a better opportunity of having success in these cases.
Left holes.
My question, if you're Don Davin, is, I was gonna say something that if they allow them to finish the school year, I don't want them to, is that, was that incorrect?
So if they fraudulently, fraudulently register, the borrowing is different. They have ability to prove.
That pay off more though.
So if somebody moves, like say, the parents move during the school year.
Absolutely.
Because, because price that it costs to educate a student is far less than the cost of.
Well, again, you know, we've talked about this. We're talking about children. In that particular child who resets at five in the morning and gets home at eight thirty, it's having a rough day. And your heart hurts for the families in the situation. At the end of the day, to Chris Tren's point, it's left those services.
Tax pay.
And, you know, we need to allocate our limited tax funds for the students who live in the district. And we can't feel bad about that, we will make sure they have successful transitions out. At the end of the day, the children who live within our boundaries are the ones that deserve to go to school.
So in June, we had nine cases that had four, we told them that we believed, four we were unsure of, and one like definitely did believe. And so the numbers in this report is that we had six investigations, is that part of the original?
No, these are.
Six official. So, so since we hired the new firm, the new firm has definitively identified, so that's four plus four more, right? So that's eight total.
I don't know, is more than.
Yes, because they started, I think we officially started them like thirteen of them last year. So there was that initial wave, took that into registration, we had this, so now, now it's kind of a transition. Obviously, we have our first wave, we've just sent them another five, but we'll, as we move into January and February, then we'll open it up a little bit. Because that becomes a situation of, if we reasonably expect, if we reasonably, if you don't live here, the registration process has to be free reers. So they'll help inform that process. It's Chris Tren's point, we want to make sure that as you register.
I guess I, I don't feel like the tracking is already late, but like, we've already taken back the process and not doing residency verification for certain grade levels. So we pulled that back, so houses come in every couple of years. So I feel like we've taken a step back, we did it a lot easier because we got in. Now, I, that's just from my side of the.
Are they really suspicious they're black or something, or do they have to?
And, I mean, can you tell us generally, are these all brand new students, so some of them have been here for a couple of years?
I'm sure.
What'd you say?
I would say.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, I would say this week. I'd say it's a little bit.
I just agree, I think that a number of taxpayers in the community view that as, they would like to hear some, that's a successful. And it also, you know, we also have taxpayers out there that believe that, you know, forty percent of the population of age of, is not with you. So our numbers are useful for both ends, right, to say, well, we're looking, and this is how many we've come, and so, so I think it's.
True.
Any other questions about residence? Does timber board talk?
Everybody's fair to the board. Simple stuff is on here, we had a couple of things, a couple of minor things, but as we've talked, like intended, what's not on there is add summer schools to get that process started. Have a quick conversation about that in December, but also what's not listed on here is probably my self evaluation and initial mid-year kind of board evaluation of my progress and. So what's not on here?
Bills.
Bills are.
Always.
Always.
Never.
Death in Texas.
I know, because I'm doing them, that's why I put them in.
But probably a litigation update as well, and that's not it.
If not December, maybe because there's too much R and D, maybe in January, we add updated KF3. So updated KF3 to its heart across the K.
Of course.
So the reason why I had suggested we're adding summer school onto December is because I recall when we had a summer school update this past year. There was a lot of conversation around what next year should look like and should we make it longer, how much would that cost? So now sounds, seems like the time to start talking about that and making that decision, because I have no idea what would be involved in that, but, you know. I do know that if the program was longer, you could significantly increase your number, because parents are looking for something that lasts longer in the day. So, you know, is there a way to have a mixture of academics and sports, something?
More. You can do it. We need more.
Maybe more challenge for them.
I, I, I don't know.
We can't just, so, you know what?
Summer scheme.
It drives the cost up, not only because of money, but because there's people who are focused. And so, you have to be aggressive enough in your pay that we can, we would have to suffer that, most likely people from outside of the...
But you mean full pay?
Right.
Right. I mean, I mean, and there could be programs that already exist that maybe are looking for a home to land, you know, for the summer. I have no idea, I just thought December is a great time to start talking about it, because if we move in that direction, then, you know, people need time to land.
It gives us plenty of time to talk.
There you go. And then, media review, and then maybe January, we need to do a board self-assessment, so we need to get that on the agenda. I mean, we need to get that on the calendar. So, it's not gonna happen before this year's out.
No.
This calendar year's out, but we need to do it this year.
Can you answer a question? This, again, because we're gonna ask this later, but just for thought. Is there a reason that we, what time do we start summer school in the day?
Eight?
Eight. Is there a reason why we don't do the summer, we wouldn't start it a little later?
Well, daylight savings time is changing, we might want to include that.
The reason I asked is that, you know, looking at current research, where really, kids need better, 9:00, 10:00, and, you know, you think about kids who go to summer school as recovery, wouldn't it hedge our bets if, or their bets, if they got a little bit more sleep in the morning, and they came to school a little bit more fresh, engaged cognitively to then spend, because my experience teaching summer school, is I get a lot of sleepy, angry children, who may have signed up for this, people honor-reading class, who are still mad, and they're still kind of waiting. So, is, that might be a consideration for discussion. I just would be curious, I just thought, you know, to have the same thing more.
That's right.
I mean, I don't think that will increase your numbers, because the same group of people who would come at eight are those who are still available to come a little bit later. Because it, so it doesn't solve the problem of, you know, expanding the program, but, you know, this is the time to talk.
That's right, absolutely is.
Okay. Any other questions about the December calendar? Okay. I need a motion to move into executive session to discuss matters relating to collective bargaining. So, wait a second. All favors stand on. Go, standing.
Looks like, I forgot.
Okay, there are no other questions, I think.